Okay, I think we're on. We good?
We are good, yes.
Okay. So we'll call this work session, May 4th, City Council, Jamestown City Council Work Session to Order. Is there any public comment, Jennifer?
No, I haven't received anything.
Okay, seeing no public comment, then we'll move on to the committees and Kim, if you want to start with Finance.
Sure. We actually have the same resolution that will be on Public Works. And I'm going to ask Joe and whoever else to talk to it a little bit more than me. But it's I'm just gonna read the front sentence and then the last resolve. It's authorizing the implementation and funding in the first instance, 100% of the federal aid and state Marchiselli Program Aid Eligible Costs of a Transportation Federal Aid Project and Appropriating Funds Therefore, Resolved That A Certified Copy Of This Resolution Be Filed With The New York State Commissioner Of Transportation By Attaching It To Any Necessary Agreement In Connection With A Project. And Further, It Is Resolved That This Resolution Shall Take Effect Immediately.
Okay. You want to speak to that?
Joe, is that you or Jeff?
This is just, this is one that you actually approved about a year for the Smart Tourist Transportation Grant that we got basically from the Gabby Foundation. Gabby's putting in $100,000. The state's gonna match it with $400,000. That's to do signage downtown, directional signage to the Comedy Center, the theaters, Lucy Desi, that type of thing. And after the plan was developed and finalized, which I just got her thing today saying they fully accepted the plan, I was determined that we needed to put more money, move more money into the inspection line, and this just makes that modification.
Jeff?
Yep.
Jeff, I had a question. You had, you mentioned earlier to me about parking meters too?
Oh, I'm sorry. I miss say. The the parking meter replacement in the downtown is also included. It's a good point, Tom.
Okay.
Smart meters.
Smart meters.
Anybody had any other questions?
So we're, this is Grant. We're actually gonna put in 500 of our own money? Or is it all covered to the state with the 400 and the 100 from the Gabby, right?
100 from the Gabby and 400 from the total of 500.
All right. And the states, the state says that that money's all still good. There's no concerns right now with maybe the lack of funds from their side or any worry about getting reimbursed for that?
They were the ones that contacted me last week and said we needed this agreement to be modified. So.
Oh, okay, perfect.
Okay. Any other questions on this?
Maybe just for a little more there. We look to go out to bid maybe in the next couple of weeks. So you're probably looking sometime within the next couple of months of awarding this and it'll come back to the council for award.
Hey Jeff, one other thing could we look at? I talked to Larry Barmore at the county about the parking in front of the DMV. And one of the things we talked about was maybe the, some of those meters being, you know, or encouraging people to pay or, you know, less complaints down there. Is there a way to get a couple of those down in front of the DMV there as well? It didn't look like that was covered on the map that you had signed.
At this point, we can't change, may be very difficult to change the plan. We've had so many re- reiterations of it. But we can look at the DMV situation separately, I guess.
Okay, maybe something we'd have to pay for out of our own pocket or something, or find, maybe make an agreement with them somehow.
Is that it?
Okay.
So just for my clarification, this total cost is gonna be 500,000. And basically, there's no money coming from the city. And that includes the meters?
Right. There would be no, no money coming from the city. Only thing we're helping out with is coordination of the work.
Okay. All right.
Jeff, would that include like taking down the old signs? And then, I mean, who, what, as far as installation and all of that, is that part of that funding too?
Installation of the new signs is part of the funding. As I was telling Tom this morning or this afternoon, the Gabby also bought preliminary signs we put up last year before the Comedy Festival. We'll, we'll help them take that down with the Traffic Division.
Is that it? Okay, the other item we have for discussion is the stop-loss proposals for the period running June 1st, 2020 to May 31st, 2021.
Okay, I'll review these. You should have received either in the mail or I know Jennifer sent an email. There were three pages with stop-loss proposals from our current provider, Premier Consulting. And then I also sent one this afternoon that got here under the timeline from Blue Cross. I'll start with the pages from Premier. First of all, especially for a couple of our new councilmen, this is our stop-loss insurance policy. What that entails is we have a specific deductible on each participant. Currently, it's $175,000 per year for, per participant. We've been at that 175,000 level for quite a few years now. It's, it's inched up over the last 25 years from 50,000 and then up to our current level of 175,000. So the first page, on the far-left column is our current policy that we have now, the in-force column with Symmetra Insurance. In the first page, the, the deductibles are all 175,000. The rate per participant per month is $65.46. We have about 513 participants enrolled now. Total cost of the city at the bottom is about $403,000. The second column to the, to the right of that is a quote from our current provider, Symmetra. They went up a fair amount. They went up to $73.85% of participants in total to 454,000. So it's an increase of about 52,000. We got two other companies to quote. Option one is HM Life. HM Life until last year, we had had them for approximately seven years. They hung with us through some really tough years there where we really had some, some big claims. So they came in with a proposal of $67.07 per participant for a total of approximately 413,000. So about a $10,000 increase. We actually, we got one other proposal from Unum Insurance. They were a little higher, $68.27, total of $420,000. There were two other companies that declined to quote Voya and Sun Life. So that's the first page at the current level, 175,000. The second page, the, brings up the deductibles to $200,000 per participant. And the third page, 225,000 per participant. So the question always arises, you know, and if you look at pages two and three, as you raise the deductible, the total annual premium goes down. But the question always arises, okay, how do we determine what deductible level? And if we increase our deductibles, what additional exposure does that bring to the city of Jamestown? And as I mentioned every year, it's a little hard to tell. This is, this, there is some, you know, risk in choosing the proper deductible. We do, on, on average each year, average between two and three participants that usually go over the deductible. So if you compare, so if you compare just the first page with the second page as an example, and let's, let's focus in since HM Life was, was a low on the, the current deductible of 175. It came in about 413,000 at that deductible level. At 200,000, they're at about 360. So you're talking, you know, approximately a little over 50-some thousand dollar increase. So if you have, going back to my historical example of two to three participants exceeding the deductible, if you, you know, save, you know, 50,000 or more on the premium, but if you have two additional, if you have two people go over the deductible, you're gonna pay, you know, we're, we're gonna be exposed on the initial, initial deductible. So, you know, obviously the insurance companies know how to put these together. So, you know, I've, the last few years, I've been hesitant to suggest to the council that we should increase the deductible. We've been pretty steady in that amount. The, you know, the premium came in just with a slight increase at the 175 level. I mean, we should obviously are here to discuss it, but I just wanted to point out how this, how this works. Before I go to the Blue Cross proposal, any, any question on, on this so far?
No, I'm, I'm actually surprised at the renewal. They wanted our business so bad. I was surprised that was that high, to be honest with you, with Symmetra.
Yeah, yeah. Symmetra, you know, they were, this was their first year. They came in pretty low last year to get the business, but I was a little surprised that they, that they came in a little higher. I have a little bit of a hunch why they did, and I can explain that as we, if you have what I sent you this afternoon from Blue Cross. The format is, is pretty similar. The far-left column and they is at the, is the current program with Symmetra. And Blue Cross gave three options at the same deductible levels of 175, 202, 25. At the 175 level, they actually come in pretty close to HM Life. They come in at $67.37 per participant as compared to $67.0 cents for HM Life. So only a 30 cent increase, which equates to only about $1,850 per year. But they do have, the one caveat is at the very bottom, they, they do laser one participant at 225,000. And what that, yeah, what that means, there's one participant who they're concerned about. And when you laser someone, it's a fancy term for saying that, that, that particular individual has a higher deductible. So the one person has a higher, has a deductible of 225,000 just for that particular individual. So the city, even though the, the, the per participant cost of the premium is very close, you have a, you have an additional exposure of $50,000 of potential liability to the city. You know, one thing I should point out on the other side is going with Blue Cross, because they handle our, because they are the, the third-party administrator for our plan. And if they did get the stop-loss insurance, they would give a discount back on our administrative cost of about $18,000. So part of that 50 would be, you know, would, would, would come back to the city. But having said that, you know, the, I guess the, the comparison I'm, I'm looking at is, you know, the HM Life versus the Blue Cross. You know, again, the per participant cost is similar. HM, HM is slightly less. But you do have the exposure on the Blue Cross product of $50,000 for one particular individual. I was always trying to do, I mean, this has to be in place by June 1st. I didn't put a resolution together because I always like the council to have the ability to talk about it for, you know, a week or two before we actually, we could put a resolution up next week. So that's why I just put it on as a discussion item. It's, it's always an important thing that we do every year. So any, any, any question to this point?
No questions, but I'll add my two cents to you, Joe. I kind of agreed that the liability on the 225 caveat can end up being a lot more than what HM Life gave us. And HM Life was very good to us for quite a few years with some hefty, hefty medical stop-loss issues. So my personal gut feeling leads towards that. I don't know how the rest of finance feels, but certainly we can take the next week to look at it. But as you noted, we need to vote on this at the end of the month.
Hey Joe, is there anything on our side administratively that would also be easier with it being through Blue Cross, Blue Shield because they're the third-party administrator?
To us, it's kind of transparent. You know, currently, Blue Cross works with Symmetra or whoever the carrier is that's, if we don't choose a, you know, Blue Cross. We've really had no issue. Blue, Blue Cross has always provided the information to, to whoever the insurance company was. They, you know, they really do a nice job in all aspects of our program. So, you know, for, for me, you know, it doesn't really matter because they have, they haven't caused us any problems by not having our stop-loss. They've been very professional.
Okay, thank you.
I just had a quick question about when you said there was one individual that was, as you said, lasered on this.
Right.
How does Blue Cross, Blue Shield know that person's background?
Well, they, they, they do. They, you know, they have, especially when you have what's called high-cost claimants. We get a report of, of, by dollars of everyone who reaches at least $50,000. So we know what claims are in the pipeline. And there's usually, I think right now, there's probably about, you know, as we approach the end of this year on this contract, there's, there's usually about 20 people who have exceeded $50,000 in claims. And then when it gets close to, closer to or approaching or exceeding our stop-loss, we get additional information. And they put together a cost prognosis for the city. They also put together a prognosis on the medical side, on the particular individual. You know, one, one of the key aspects of the, of the Blue Cross program is they, you know, when they just don't, they just don't adjudicate claims. They have nurses who do case management. So they, any, any, any big dollar item, they're, they're doing two things. One, one for the particular individual, trying to make sure they have the best care possible. And two, for the city, you know, trying to keep our, our claims as low as possible. So they're very aware of anybody who has any substantial claims.
Is that, is that because they're already our third-party administrator?
That's correct.
They would obviously know about all the individuals as a result of them being the administrators. Is that correct?
That, that's correct. We, I get a monthly, what's called an HCC, High Claim Cost, High Cost Claim Report. And, you know, they kind of fill us in of any, any issues that are, you know, on the horizon or right in front of us.
Okay.
But, but Joe, even the other third parties would have access to the same information, correct? In order to put out the protocols?
Yeah, every, every month, the report we get is the same one that goes to the insurance carrier. And I'm sure they follow up, you know, with any questions they may have.
In the past, I remember like three or four people were lasered certain years.
That, that's correct. We've, we've had some, some years where we had, you know, a number of issues. So right now, we just have the one. And, and like I said, we've had about, you know, two, two to three people exceed the, you know, the stop-loss the last few years.
So then next week in Finance, or, you know, we'll make a decision which way we want to go. Everybody should probably just think about it, look at it, look it over. If you have any questions, you know, talk to Joe or, you know, we'll make a decision next week and then we'll have a resolution for the voting session. Is that good?
Yep, thank you.
Anything else, Kim?
No, that's it out of Finance.
Following my papers here. Got them all over the place. If there's nothing else for Finance, then we'll go on to Housing. And Councilwoman James, anything in Housing? Hello?
I'm muted.
Yeah, let me unmute myself. Thank you, Mr. President. We're, we're, we're gonna do a discussion. We're asking Crystal to lead us tonight regarding the update on the HUD funding, the Gateway law projects, and we'll, we'll go with that first and then the second. An ideal to forming small committees to focus on developing strategies to address the wide variety of housing issues that plague us, plague our city. So if Crystal, if you would go ahead and start with the HUD for us?
Sure.
Kind of give a background to that a little bit?
Yep. Yep. So I'm sure that most of you are aware that we are anticipating an allocation of seven, around $705,000 from HUD. This is for the Community Development Block Grant Funding in response to COVID. So we are still awaiting guidelines from HUD on specifically how they want us to roll anything out. What we do know is they want it to be something that can be deployed very quickly. So as soon as we receive the funds and they give us the guidelines, we pretty much need to be ready to go. So we've tried to be proactive. We're at a rental payment assistance program. It's in a final draft form, but we are waiting for a response back from our local HUD representative. There are questions on whether or not that can actually be an eligible activity under, because it's a Community Development Block Grant Funding. We're reading that it is eligible. So we, we've got to do some back and forth. But basically what that would do is it would provide some assistance for payments that have been missed. So that would be for March, April, May, potentially June, and we'll look at if it needs to go any further. So it's accomplishing a couple of different things. There's assistance for tenants to help them with, with any back payments that they may have missed for rent. And then it also is, provides assistance to landlords who are counting on that income from their rental units. So we had sort of a roundtable with a number of other local agencies who also provide different types of, whether it's rental assistance or other sort of services. One of the things that we need to make sure that we don't do is duplicate any service that's already being provided by another agency. So we, we talked through that. We've been in communication consistently with, with some of these other organizations. They provided a great deal of input. So we think that we've reached a, a good draft. I'm happy to share that with you. But again, it's, it's not really in its final form until we get some clearance from HUD on that. So that's essentially where we are with that. Does anyone have any questions before I switch to Gateway?
Crystal, can you just let them know some of the agencies that are involved in that process?
Sure. So Chautauqua Opportunities, Stell, let's see.
Those Crick card?
Crick Code, United Way, pretty much any agency locally that provides some level of housing assistance in the form of, you know, it could be with rental assistance. It could be with providing rehab, like Crick and Code. It could be providing actual housing. So any of the, the local agencies that have, you know, any sort of resource in that realm.
Thank you.
So is that the only plan so far for the whole 705 is the rental assistance?
We're also working on a small business impact, whether it's a loan or a grant. So that's in development. And we had a, another roundtable discussion with some other agencies to sort of guide us in the right direction. Again, making sure that we're not duplicating services or resources and that we're providing something that is needed. We're still waiting, like I said, we're still waiting on some additional guidance from HUD, which kind of puts us in a weird place that, you know, we want to be proactive. We want to be able to, to get this money out into the community as quickly as possible. But we also need to make sure that we are in compliance with HUD guidelines. And those guidelines haven't yet been issued. So we're not entirely sure what that program is going to look like, but we're, we're looking at, you know, it may be something that's like a flexible spending. So if, you know, I, I think the needs of local businesses we're finding are going, going to be different depending on the, the type of business. So it could be potentially assistance for operational costs. It could be help paying utilities. It could be helping retool what, what sort of product or service offerings they have. It could be retrofitting their business so that it is safe and, and you know, appropriately set up for social distancing practices when, when staff does return or when customers return. So that's sort of where we're going. But again, that hasn't been fully developed.
How about homeowners? Is it, or is it just gonna apply to renters or something?
Sorry, I heard homeowners, but then I got lost in what the question was.
Does it, is, does it apply to homeowners or is there anything set up to assist homeowners or is it just for renters?
The rental assistance program, so that is set up for homeowners who are also landlords. So most of the, the criteria that has been developed, it's set up so that those landowners, landlords who are homeowners. So usually it's like a homeowner-occupied property, right? They are the ones that will benefit. So, and, and we put limitations on how many units can be eligible. So, you know, landlords who have 50 properties across the city cannot, they're not eligible to receive assistance for all of those properties.
Also, I like about this is it helps the city also with the, the rental registration so that the people will have to register, you know, the landlords, they will have to register their property. That's something that, you know, so I like that because that's another enhancement tool for us to make that happen. And also that properties will also be, they would have to clean up their site. So if they had some things, some, some things, some debris outside, they would have to clean up their property also. So that's, so I, I like that part for the city also. some things, some debris outside, they would have to clean up their property also. So that's, so I, I like that part for the city also, that it'll be attached to the program.
Yeah, something else too is, is post, I guess, post COVID, when, when it's safer in interior inspections again. One of the requirements to participate in the program is their, the property is subject to an interior inspection.
Well, that helps with the lead.
Yes, yes.
Let paint.
Absolutely.
So it's a threefer.
Yep.
So is there, is there anything else on that or any questions regarding HUD piece? If not, if there's going to be an update on what's going on with the Gateway Loaf project?
Yep. So the Planning Commission, I think that we've talked about this previously. So the Gateway Lofts presented to the Planning Commission a, a site plan back in February. The Planning Commission voted to require, so they, under Seeker, they declare a positive declaration, which means the plan was subject to an environmental impact statement. So Gateway, the Gateway Lofts team, because the environmental impact statement could potentially extend the project by seven months, requested to have the Planning Commission reconsider that environmental impact statement. And at the last Planning Commission meeting, which was held April, I can't think of the date off the top. I had 16th or 17th, whatever that third Tuesday was of the month. The Gateway Lofts team requested that the Planning Commission, again, reconsider. Agreement between the Planning Commission and Gateway Lofts was to form a small task force, which includes three Planning Commission members, including the chair, which is Greg Rab. And then a, a number of members from the Gateway Lofts project team. The purpose of that was to develop a mitigation plan, which specifically speaks to or addresses the the, the major sticking point for the Planning Commission, which is the neighborhood revitalization plan. It's based on the Gateway Lofts would introduce 110 new units into housing availability in the city. We have a, an overabundance of housing stock. However, a, a lot of that housing stock is substandard or, you know, poor condition. So I'm happy to say that there's been some successful negotiation. The last meeting, which was last week, Tuesday, I believe it was, there was, you know, some back and forth and the Gateway Lofts team is now preparing a final mitigation strategy. They'll then present that again to the Planning Commission for review. And then at the next Planning Commission meeting, there will be a vote to, I guess, accept that mitigation plan. Instead of rescinding the positive declaration and the requirement to do a full environmental impact statement, the Gateway Lofts team is going to formally withdraw their application for site plan approval and resubmit it with a new mitigation plan that the task force has already fully vetted and worked through all the details of. So that at the Planning Commission meeting, they can, the commission can vote on whether or not to accept that.
Any questions, comments? Well, the next piece of that, we were looking at ideals for forming small committees to focus on things that are going with the city of the housing issues. I know we had started a process of inviting different groups in and we were going to go continue with that. But when all this happens, I don't know, maybe we can figure out a way to probably zoom those people into, I don't know if it would be, if you'd like to have them into the work session or something. Tony, I don't know if that's something that we would have to probably work out if we were to invite different groups to come back in. So I know we were going to be talking about to the how we were going to invite people like the house. And I think maybe some of the other ones, because we, we had in the past had Code and we've had Crick. And so now that we have new council members, maybe we should, I don't know if we should have them come back in and reintroduce. And I know with the, Eddie, with your team, the transition team, we wanted to kind of go over when they had the session on housing, we wanted to look at those minutes and see whether there's some things that we could work on also. So, you know, we probably have to kind of work, how would, how would that look like and how would we do that?
Yeah, I'm sure they, they'd be happy to get you those minutes and also probably jump on Zoom call or be a part of whatever, whatever's going on.
It'd be no problem. We could have them in a work session, just like we normally do. Just include them on that and they can come in when it's their time and they can exit when they're done.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. We'll work on that then.
Hopefully we won't have to do this too much more.
I know. So is there anything on that part? I mean, I think that's committee members. Is there anything else you'd like to add to that first piece of discussion? If not, we're also wanted to have a discussion on the responsibilities of tenants and homeowners regarding rent, mortgage and utility payments. I think we kind of want to keep that in, in, in the forefront so that, you know, as this pandemic continues. But I don't know if there was any, Maria, did you have anything you'd like to, Marie? Add to this and.
I did bring it up because I think some people mistakenly think that they will not have to make those payments when this is over. It's just an abatement right now that they can't be evicted and they can't go into mortgage foreclosure. They can't disconnect utilities right now. It does not mean at some point down the road that you will not have to make up those back payments. I think some of the stimulus payment was meant to help individuals with those issues, especially while they're not working. It's not a lot of money. And the stimulus payment, when you think about rent, utilities and food, if you're not working and haven't gotten any unemployment benefits coming in. But I think somewhere along the line, people somehow think that they won't have that obligation down the road and it is not true. I was recently reading an article and they did indicate that once the moratorium is over, that banks may be looking to get all of those back mortgage payments in one payment. So if you're not putting money aside or have a way to take funds out of savings or borrow funds, you're not going to be able to get your mortgage current. And I believe they're not charging late payment penalties presently, but it's just to keep that information out there so that people don't mistakenly think that that is just going to go away. As Crystal pointed out, I think there are some groups, but they are being very careful to make sure if they are helping with a particular payment or to help people with repairs or things like that, that they can only collect from one COVID fund and that they don't want, you know, three or four family members or a family member getting help from four or five different funds from the community. They're trying to assess and spread out the need as far as they can. So if people are looking to that, that they can get four or five months of rent made up or four or five months of utility payments, they can't expect those funds will be distributed in that fashion to make them whole. So just to get the word out, I know people are, you know, it's been a very difficult time for a lot of people, but we just have to keep in mind that does not negate your obligations. Landlords still have to pay taxes. They still have to pay mortgages if they have them on their buildings, just like a homeowner with a mortgage. So we have to be mindful of that. And it's going to impact the community greatly. The one thing I will say, I don't know if it's right now, the fact that people are all home, but I do notice people are doing a lot to their properties themselves. So maybe at DOD, we're going to see fewer complaints because people are actually taking the time to take care of their properties. So we could see the, the blessing in all of this might be that people have the time and opportunity to be able to do some of the things to their homes to make them look better and to take care of those issues. So that's all I have.
I have heard there's a lot of activity at Home Depot, so that's true. So, so with that, that we're, I think we're going to keep this last. You know, as Councilwoman Maria is saying, just to keep it on the forefront, because I think people do have, you know, a feeling that, oh wow, I don't have to pay this. And oh wow, you do have to pay it, you know? So I think we'll just keep you, we'll just have it on our agenda from, you know, until we, other than that, that's it for housing.
Okay. Any questions? If not, I don't see there's anything on public safety. Brent, is there anything that you wanted to bring up?
No, I just want to thank Chief Snelling for keeping us up to date on some of the, the major drug activities or arrests that they've had. Also the, the demonstration that was held on Friday, glad to see that there wasn't, people were behaving, you know, as much as they did. Didn't look like they were moving around too much, at least from what I saw in the videos. Yeah. And also, you know, thank Deputy Chief Kuhn and Chief Snelling for their staff for, you know, you know, working as hard as they do, you know, under these trying circumstances. And unfortunately, the numbers are not, you know, what they could have been around here. And I think, you know, thankful that people are observing the social distancing and staying home, wearing their mask when they go out and trying to, you know, put a tamper on this, this epidemic that we've got going on.
Chief or Brent, I had a question. Not that I want to open up a horn and test, but I was just listening to the governor's press conference before this and the question about the, the mask wearing in public and the fact that local municipalities and these departments kind of, people were asking why people weren't getting tickets, getting fined or whatever. And I didn't think that that was an issue that you were really wor- worrying about so much here, but I did want to ask, are, do you see that happening in other areas? And you probably don't have anything going on here.
Well, a couple of issues with that. This has been a concern with, with a lot of chiefs and sheriffs across the state. When they implemented that, there's absolutely no penalty that's been associated with the wearing of the mask. And even more concerning, there's no mechanism in place for enforcement. So technically there's no violation of law. Where we could run across it, for example, some stores have a policy that you can't enter without a mask. So if you, we'll say for argument's sake, you go into a store, you remove your ass, your mask and they, they ask you to leave. If you refuse to, obviously we're going to get called and you'd be arrested for trespassing. But there's nothing in per se that we can charge someone or, or hold them accountable for not wearing a mask. The best that we can do is remind them of the social distancing and that if they can't maintain that, then they should be wearing a mask. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you. I mean, I think what he, that's kind of what he was alluding to as well, but I just wasn't sure in what circumstance that would happen. So it's as though if people are going into establishments that are requiring people to wear protective and they aren't.
I think the way the message is being portrayed is, is creating a lot of confusion. I think some people are on the assumption that we can just pull up, someone's not wearing a mask and we can issue them a ticket. That's the furthest from the truth. There's not a lot of teeth to it. Like you said, the best we can do is just remind them.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I just like, I just like to thank the chief and, you know, also because while the activity that's been going on, you know, in, in our ward and I'll let you as they're keeping, keeping my constituents safe, you know, I would really appreciate that. And a lot of that is just right around my corner, you know, I'm like, seem like I'm in the middle of all that action. So I really appreciate. JPD.
I'll pass it along. I'll pass it along.
Okay, we move on to Public Works. I know we had the same resolution. Councilman Nelson, anything else you wanted to add to that in your committee? And then I think you had one other item on there that.
No, there's, well, not, one other question I had, in fact, it just came up shortly before the meeting. I got a call from one of our summer employees who worked at Dietrich Park last summer. And he said, well, I have a job this summer. And I didn't know how to answer that. I'm not sure if any of us do, but maybe that's a question for Mr. Mayor. I don't know for, for, for.
I can answer that for you.
Yeah.
So as of, as of right now, we have not officially hired any summer employees. We, we can't really employ them now anyway, since everything is. So that's kind of in a holding pattern till we see what the finances are going to look like towards the end of the month. It asks our summer employees, some of them to fill out paperwork and get drug tested and that all have. That was kind of a preliminary thing. But as of right now, we have not officially hired any summer employees or asked them to come in.
Okay. Well, I'll, I'll pass that along. I kind of recommended that you should consider other employment just to be, just to be safe, you know? But we'll see. We'll hope for the best.
Okay.
I had a question for, I don't know if it was Public Works or Finance, because I think sometimes they overlap, but I know I had a question from the parent of PTA and Ed B. and Tony. She may have reached out to you, Joanne Dean, about the signage with regard to the spring seniors or something like that. Have we had any in the sports? Has there been any more discussion around that or?
I think the mayor sent something out in response to them, working with them. I know that they had some ideas about banners, hanging banners. I don't know how far that's gone. I don't know if they've met. I haven't heard anything more from them.
She followed up with me and I told her I would just kind of bring it up today to kind of find out where that is. So I don't know if something that want to get back to her on or now that the season is officially canceled or, or how that should play out. But and then the question of like, I would suspect that the city would put them up because it's a, it's on the posts and things like, she was asking insurance questions and all kinds of things. And whether or not it had to go as a request before public safety, if she had to fill out, fill out a specific form to have that happen. And so I just told her I would bring it up.
Tamu, I will, I will say that yes, we have been contacted about that. I did provide the required form that usually gets filled out and goes before public safety.
Okay. She said she had that, but I wasn't, I mean, maybe she was asking if there was anything else she needed to do.
I, my last response was to let us know once they figured out all of the banners and pricing and the design, they were still working through that. We wanted to know more specifically how many banners we're looking at, where they're going before we submit that to public safety. And so I don't think there was, I haven't heard anything in terms of the numbers and whether they were going to be able to afford what they were looking for at this point.
Thank you. Just, I just told her I'd ask again. So thanks, Eddie.
I just, I let her know, although she has all those final numbers, that we would process it through public safety.
Okay. Anything else from Public Works?
I don't believe, I don't believe so. That's it.
All right. If not, is there anything else before we go to the mayor's report? Anybody have anything? If not, Mr. Mayor, you're up.
All right. I have a, a couple of things, a couple of general items. And then I have for executive session, I have three personnel items. I've got two items of potential litigation and one item involving public safety. No action to be taken in those, in those matters. Just general items I wanted to share and I will be fairly brief with this general, a couple of things. Number one, the city is going to be moving to a .gov domain. So you may notice that some of our email addresses and our website address will be changing. Right now our city website is JamestownNY.net. As of tomorrow, it'll be changed to JamestownNY.gov. All city mail addresses will also be changed to at JamestownNY.gov. The old email addresses are going to continue to work. They'll still continue to be routed to the exact same place. But you'll notice that when you get an email from a city employee, that their domain name is going to be different. We decided we wanted to centralize all of our domains and we wanted to do it with an official .gov domain. So that has been implemented and Mark Dean from the IT department tells me. Uh, domain. So that has been implemented and, uh, Mark Dean from the IT department tells me that tomorrow is the. We're going to be switching those things over. Um, again, all the emails, uh, that you've normally sent to. Whatever at city of Jamestown NY dot com still work without any issue. Uh, but you'll notice that the email back will now start to be at Jamestown NY dot gov. Okay. The, uh, the second thing I just wanted to, uh, thank all of the council members, uh, who had reached out about the yard waste opening. Uh, as you guys are aware, we were able to work out a deal, uh, with BPU. Uh, we're actually using a few of our DPW workers, staff that site. Uh, we actually received several phone calls today from residents who were very excited and very appreciative that we were able to, uh. Make that change, uh, and allow people to go to that yard waste site. Uh, I do want to remind folks that it's going to be open from seven thirty AM to three PM, Monday through Friday. Uh, you need to be a solid waste customer of the BPU, uh, and you can go on your assigned garbage day. Uh, and this will be until May fifteenth, uh, which will also coincidentally be the last day of the governor's, uh, pause order. Uh, and one day until the end of our state of emergency here in the city of Jamestown.
Couple of quick questions on that. Uh. If the ma- if the mayor, if the governor extends that, will we continue to do it on that same? Say he extends the stay at home quarantine, whatever, for another two weeks, will we continue to operate this way?
Uh, we're going to evaluate that with the, uh, the BPU operations. I know the BPU is working on a ramp up plan. That I'm going to talk about as well, in terms of the city. Uh, so the BPU is looking to start to ramp up. They are exempted as a utility company, uh, from the governor's pause order. However, they've been operating, uh, similar to the city. In order to be socially responsible, uh, and also help prevent the spread. Uh, but after the fifteenth, they are looking to, uh, start to ramp up. Uh, but obviously that could change depending on what the governor has to say. Um, for now, we've scheduled just the fifteenth, but we'll evaluate it. Uh, towards the end of that next week.
One more, one other question about it. I had someone ask, because their offices are closed, is there any way for someone to obtain a sticker or is it? Pretty much, we can't do anything about that right now.
So all we're asking is that you just have, uh, proof of residency. Uh, so whether that's a BPU bill or if you can bring a, a piece of mail. Uh, you don't necessarily need the sticker if you have it, and then that makes it a bit easier. Uh, but we do just need some piece of information to identify that you're a city resident or a solid waste customer of the BPU.
Thank you. That's, that clarifies that. Thanks. Okay. Is there anything else?
Yard waste?
That's it.
All right. Um, so my last, uh, general item that I just wanted to touch base with you all on, uh, is the reopening plan. Uh, obviously we might still be a bit of ways away from that. I do want to let folks know that here in the city, we are working on. Uh, phased in reopening plan with each of the departments. Uh, so we're looking at a phased in of twenty-five percent increase in staffing to fifty percent to seventy-five percent to full staffing. Uh, so we're trying to create a plan to determine what that looks like. Uh, what areas of controls we need to have in order to ensure the prevention of any type of spread of the virus. Uh, how we will be disinfecting certain areas, uh, whether we're going to be allowing, uh, certain travel and, uh. You know, certain safeguards for our employees while interacting with the public. So each department is working, uh, with our office to start to develop that plan. Uh, and as soon as that's done, we hope to share that draft, uh, for the council to review. Uh, the BPU is also going through a similar exercise right now, uh, to create a reopening plan, uh, for them. Uh, in the meantime, I do want to share with you just a few slides, uh, from the governor's presentation today during his briefing. Uh, in regards to the opening. Uh, so I'm going to just share my screen with you guys, if you can see it. Let's see here. Are you all able to see my screen?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I'm just going to go through a few things. I just wanted to point out for the council members. Uh, the reason I'm doing this is today, uh, we were on a call with the governor's office. They provided a little bit more additional information. And I know many of you have constituents and residents that are asking about some of these plans and how things are going to look. So I just wanted to share a few things with you in terms of reopening, uh, especially here in the city. Um, first and foremost, there are about seven metrics that the, uh, state of New York is now asked. Uh, that a region, we are the Western New York region, which includes Niagara, Erie County, Chautauqua County, Cataragus County. Uh, we are one, uh, Western New York region. Those regions, especially ours, must have at least fourteen days of decline in total hospitalizations. And deaths on a three-day rolling average. Uh, the second, that region, uh, cannot exceed fifteen total new cases. Or five new deaths on a three-day rolling average. So those are the first two metrics that they're looking at for a region. Um, the third, they have to have fewer than two new COVID patients admitted per one hundred thousand residents. Again, this is for an entire region, the Western New York region. Uh, the fourth one is for capacity for the hospitals. Regions must have at least a thirty percent total hospital and ICU beds available. Uh, they also have to have a stock supply of at least ninety days of PPE. Okay? I can tell you some of our hospitals, um, are already working to. Metric as well as stockpiling for the PPEs. Uh, so in that regard, we're doing okay. Uh, the sixth one, which is something that we actually need to work on as a region, uh, there is a recommendation of thirty tests for every one thousand residents. Per month. Uh, we do need to ramp up testing here in the Western New York region. Uh, I will note that all of the requirements coming from the governor's office are CDC recommendations from the federal government. Uh, and the other, uh, metric that they're looking at is, uh, contact tracing. Being able to trace where, uh, and how someone got in contact with the virus. Um, every region has to have a baseline of thirty contact tracers for every one hundred thousand residents. Now, we need to beef that number up. I will tell you that the Bloomberg Foundation, Mike Bloomberg. Uh, is going to be working with the state and various mayors, uh, to help create, uh, those tracers. Uh, so we have received a little bit of guidance from that, although we do expect more written guidance from the governor's office. On how they plan to do contact tracing, uh, going forward in the state. There is going to be a phased reopening of businesses. I, I, I'm going to kind of briefly go over this and kind of go into the next one, which is a little easier to understand. Uh, but they're looking at, uh, which businesses have greater economic impact and low infection of risk. Those businesses will start first, uh, and then you start to look at some of the other economic impact and higher infection of risk. Uh, so the, uh, the opening plan, and this will be a little easier to view, is based on a four-phase opening. Um, first one being a phase one opening of construction, manufacturing, wholesale supply chains. And select retail with curbside service. Second one being professional services, finance, retail, um, real estate. Third one being full restaurants and hotels and accommodations, and the fourth one being arts entertainment. Um, I will note that each phase has about a two-week, uh, mid-period. So once phase one is enacted, typically phase two won't happen until there's been about two weeks of that opening. Same thing between phase two and phase three. There'll be a two-week period and then another two weeks between phase three and phase four. We are still waiting again for written guidance from the governor's office on it. Uh, however, that's been what, that's what we were told as of today for the phase in reopening. Each of those sectors will also have a plan for how to reopen and how to maintain distance as well as. Uh, disinfecting and prevention of spread. Uh, so we'll be looking towards sector plans, uh, for each of those areas for the phased in reopening. Uh, most of those plans have to do with adjusted hours, social distancing, uh, potential mask usage, depending on how close people are with one another. Uh, and, uh, health screening for certain areas along with tracking and reporting. Uh, and then the last slide, uh, well, second to last, uh, this is, these are all the regions that the governor has identified. Uh, I do want to point out that the Western New York region, as much as we have believed that we have a low number of cases in Chautauqua County, which we do. But as one region, we are still a high-risk region. Uh, the reason for that is on the next slide. These are all of the seven items that the governor's office requires in order to reopen. Um, as of right now, uh, you'll notice that the Western New York region only has three of the seven metrics met. So there is some, uh, need to see a decrease in hospitalizations. Uh, a increase in testing, uh, and contract taste, uh, contract tracing. Uh, as well as a decrease in any other new hospitalization. So we're still working on those items, uh, in terms of moving forward. Uh, I did speak with the governor's office today and they were mentioning that they do believe that some of these regions will be eligible to open. Or start the process of opening May fifteenth. Some other regions that have lower metrics met may take longer before. They issue any opening procedure. Uh, so with us being in Western New York, I'm not super confident that we're going to open, uh, starting May fifteenth. Uh, it might take us a couple of weeks after that, uh, but, uh, these are the metrics that they're looking for in order for us as one. Uh, Western New York region, uh, to open. Um, with that, I'll ask if you guys have any questions. I'm going to stop sharing that, uh, screen for you and I did send you that PowerPoint. Uh, but I just wanted to give you all an update. I know many of your, uh, residents or constituents may be asking those questions. Uh, we have been getting updates daily from the governor's office and as soon as I get actual efficient, official written guidance. I'll pass those along to you guys too, so you have a better understanding of when we plan on opening Western New York.
Yeah, I'm really disappointed that, you know, we're considered part of the Western New York region. As, as opposed to the Southern Tier region. If you looked at the, the numbers, they're so skewed by the Erie County. Um, numbers of people infection, the people died, you know, the hospitalizations, everything in the whole Western region is getting skewed by Erie County. You know, and I understand the governor saying, well, if we open up certain things, people are going to come here because of that. But not if we open up manufacturing and construction, that, that's not going to bring people from Erie County down here. It's when you get down to like phase three and four, I think, when you open up the restaurants, the entertainment, um. You know, the recreation, that's when people are going to start to come, but, you know. If we could have been put into the Southern Tier, I think we could reopen manufacturing, construction, and that would help a lot of our residents.
I agree. I'd like to, what was the determination? Who drew the lines? You know, we're, we're in the Southern Tier when it comes to our congressional district, but yet.
Right.
Right. Western New York or this, and no matter where the line is, someone's going to open before someone else and someone's going to go somewhere else. So. Uh, there's no real hundred percent way to control where people go and what they do. Uh, it's, it's unfortunate and disappointing that, you know, we're going to pay the price.
Unfortunate is an understatement when it comes to manufacturing and economic impact in this area. It's devastating.
Exactly.
Is there any chance to make a change in that? Is there any movement in changing those regions? Is there anything we can do?
Uh, at this point, the answer to that is no, uh, that they've already set those regions since the state has taken kind of control over the pandemic crisis. Uh, they're the ones to essentially open them up. Uh, they've decided to go by region. Uh, and in terms of other recommendations they received, uh, but. I, at this point, no, we're going to be tied to that region. Um, from what I can tell, we know that some of our, uh, state representatives. Uh, have been pushing to open up Chautauqua County earlier than the rest. Um, I, at this point, from the guidance that I received from the governor's office, it doesn't seem like that is going to be, uh, is going to happen.
It's too bad.
It's disgusting.
All right. Anything else on that or anything else before we go to executive session?
Uh, those are the only general items that I have. Just wanted to give you all an update. Uh, and again, I have three personnel items, two potential litigation. And one public safety, uh, none require action.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Moved by Councilwoman Eklund and second.
No, well, Caruba.
Did you hear? Okay.
I don't know.
We're not in the same room. I can't see. We'll say Caruba got it. Okay. One favor.
Hi.
Hi. All right, we'll give you a minute here to.
Thank you.
Everybody off and, uh, go to executive session.
Thank you. Could I ask, uh, Chief, uh, Snellings to stay just for a couple of minutes? Um, Elliot, uh, Corporation Council Ramondo, please. And that should be all. And, oh, I'm sorry, um, uh, Matt Kuhn as well, please. Great. Just give me a minute to turn off the live recording.